We'll call meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our December meeting. Appreciate you being here. First item of business today is approve the minutes of our last meeting on November 5th. Move for approval.
Second.
We moved to second to approve the minutes of November 5th. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sign them. Debbie, two minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Quarter. You said war. I just want to bring before you the affidavit that I'm required to present to you every year. It explains what amounts of money we will use from the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund that you won't have to fund. So there's a total of $132,075. We'll be using, two of them are for our full-time employees. And I am assuming with the raise it would be $47,464. Then the part-time will be $31,287 for next year. We'll also pay for any office supplies that we use in the office, up to $1,500. Dues and subscriptions, $1,360. And travel would be $3,000, up to $3,000.
We appreciate this so much.
Certainly appreciate using these funds in place of what would be general funds that were not here. Do you have a motion to extend?
Move for approval.
Second.
You didn't wait, did you? No. Were you taking the time?
Do you have any questions, Debbie?
Thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Debbie, you might say again about, I did go to your website for registering the title of property and it wasn't as simple as I thought it would be.
Good, good, good.
So you might say something about it for the public here.
Yeah, we would love for you to visit the Recorder's website or docpop.com. There's a link there that you can click, sign up to be able to use the Property Watch tool. It will allow you to watch any documents that might be filed in the Recorder's office. It could be a lien, fraudulent deed, any mischievous activity that might be happening, you would get an alert within 10 minutes of when it's filed in our office. So we encourage you to sign up for that. I'm going to try to get a mailer into the tax statements this year so that all the taxpayers will be alerted about this.
Is that something that's offered in all counties or is this?
It is, yes. Every county. Doc Pop has about half of them.
It's totally free.
Yes, it's totally free. That's the big one. Thank you. It's scary.
It is. Adam.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Thank you all for including me on your agenda today.
We said you'd be seeing us a lot. We're here on the day of the meeting.
Again, thank you for your time today. The reason that I'm here today is on behalf of the court, specifically the Public Defender's Office. My request is, one, to create a budget for Fund 1200, which is the Supplemental Public Defender Services Fund. There was not a budget previously presented to counsel. And then the second part of that request is to appropriate the amount of $12,852 to 33200 line item, which is contractual professional. The purpose of this is, the PD's office for quite some time now has been researching different case management systems. The one that's currently in use is a bit clunky, not very user-friendly, and so trying on different potential suitors for case management systems. What they identified was a system called ZLS. ZLS does not stand for anything. Best I could tell from the website is, they referenced zealous advocacy for clients in their website numerous times. So that's the best I can come up with for ZLS. But in any case, ZLS is a case management system designed by two former public defenders currently being used in 11 states, including in Floyd County, Indiana. It's a cloud-based system that does a couple of things. I just thought I'd share a couple of the main features of it, if that's of interest to any of you. Creates a central location for the exchange of discovery materials and provides more efficient paperless access to those materials during hearings, trials, and when off-site from the office. There's some AI function that transcribes videos. It allows email and text access to clients, report generation, 24/7 support, and probably most importantly, the system was demoed by ZLS for Craig Eason from our IT department. And at least the feedback that I received was that it wouldn't cause any additional burden on our IT department for this to be used by the PD's office. Derek Mason, who is affiliated with the Commission of Court Appointed Attorneys, was consulted about if this would be an appropriate use of the Supplemental Public Defender Services Fund. His advice was that it would be for, at least initially for the first year, but not really likely beyond that. And so, I don't know if that was too much information, but happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
So if your fund is not eligible for supplying ongoing expenses, any listing in the contract or the purchase agreement as to what the annual reoccurring cost would be for maintenance and software?
So the annual cost is, would be at least, for now, it's $12,852. How that would be broken down is $119 per month, per account. That's nine licenses for a period of 12 months. And that's how I came up with the $12,852. When I spoke with Sam, Samuel Batiston, from our Public Defender's Office about sort of the long-term plan, he did indicate that they would definitely pursue things like grant opportunities, you know, look at those types of things to move, or to fund this moving forward.
So if it's an annual reoccurring cost of $12,852, is it more of a software as a service?
Yes, yeah. And the 24/7 support.
In relation to your question, Barry, I've talked with, and I've had several conversations with Samuel on this. I've talked with Jeff Rothz about the possibility of some legislation to free up the use of this fund. It's very restrictive.
Very much so.
Pretty much. It says about the only thing you can do is something for temporary until the next budget cycle to get it covered. And so I think there's a lot of support among counties and so forth to free up some of these funds. Currently, we have almost a half a million dollars in that fund, and there's very little we can do with it.
Correct.
Sam has been talking to me quite some time about the need of a better system there. Craig, I've talked to Craig as well to back up what you said. He thinks it has met all of his concerns and needs. Was very pleased with what he saw.
So what would be required on our part to allow this to happen?
I, to me, the steps would be to create a budget for next year for the Supplemental Public Defender Services Fund, which is 1200, to appropriate $12,852 into contractual professional, which is the 33200. And then I believe I would need to come back to the commissioners. I would want to review, there is a software service agreement, which to me appears as a contract. And so I would need to definitely go through the commissioners to.
So have you talked with the Auditor's Office about establishing that?
I have not, just briefly this morning. But I thought that this might be the first step. I had provided them with a budget sheet, but no steps beyond that.
So it sounds to me like what we would need to do is give the go-ahead to proceed to put together a budget and so forth. Would that be correct? Are there any questions? Craig, do you have anything to add on that software?
I really think it's a really good opportunity for them, though. I really think it's going to change the way that their office runs, make it a lot more efficient.
I would say proceed and return back to us. And yes, ultimately, it would be the commissioners that approve a contract.
Okay.
Purchase that once the funds are in place.
Well, I need to come back to counsel on the 17th in order to establish anything with the budget itself or appropriate funding.
Work that out with the Auditor's Office.
Okay, I'll do that.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and, maybe this is a question for Mark, to go ahead and approve making a budget and creating the line that Adam is talking about now? And then when we come back and?
Sooner's always better than later. But if you're going to have to get it done by January 1st anyway, because you're going to have payroll and those things to be taken out of that money.
Well, that particular one wouldn't have payroll, but if they create one later down the road, it might be something else. But, so Max, I would make the motion, this is the appropriate way to say it, to create the budget and create the line that Adam was asking for in that budget. And, okay, do we need to appropriate?
I have just one question. Would you like to have it still like budget projection that you can see it next year?
I would. Well, yes and no, because we can only use this money one year unless the legislation gets changed. There's no reason not to put it, include that budget in this next year, and we'll decide at that point if we can continue with that or not.
You would see how much you expand it if you want to have it like part of budget projection, I guess would be then.
And then do we need to go ahead also in the same or a second motion to appropriate the $12,850 into that?
I think we would need, ought to have the line item and the budget ready, and then approve that.
Sure, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, we want it to be. So do that, then it's?
I'll just add on the motion for them to proceed and getting this all put together and then come back when they're ready.
I'll second that.
They moved to second to authorize the Auditor's Office and Court Services in Defense to proceed to put this together. He's already given us a budget.
He has that budget, yeah.
Well.
For Fund 1200?
Yeah.
So the motion is just to put that line into?
Just to approve it?
We've already talked to him about it.
Okay.
Set it up in our office. Whatever you decide to do, I didn't realize that that had been done. Sorry. So is that ready then for our approval?
If you approve it, we will put it to budget projection and roll it to start.
Can we see that?
That's zero.
Twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the budget here, the line item created. So do you want to change your motion to approve this then?
Sure. I'll change my second.
They moved to second to approve the requested budget and line item number to cover this expense for the first year of use of this software, once it's approved and put in place. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So now do we still need to wait till the next meeting to do the money part since we've already got that done?
I think that the money's there now since we approved this, so.
Oh, okay.
You've done what you need to do, and we'll set up a budget for him.
So it's now up to working with the commissioners to get a contract approved to purchase the software.
Because he has the appropriation now.
So then Adam does not need to come back to see us, just the commissioners. There he goes.
He'll want to.
He'll be back.
He'll find something else trash or something like that.
The next time you're here, you can report on the progress.
I will, sure. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to move this forward. Chair.
Hi. Thank you for seeing me this morning. I did originally have a commissary resolution that I wanted to seek your approval for, which, again, in a resolution that provides, as well, set amounts that I can spend out of commissary that's agreed upon ahead of time by counsel. But because of a small point of confusion on myself, I thought Mr. Cross was going to prepare that document. He said he's reviewed it, didn't have any problems with it. But I assume that that would be here for you today. I will need to bring that back to you at workshops this month, so you can approve it at that time, if that's okay. What I will do is I will send that out to each of you, so you have plenty of time to review that in advance of that meeting. But with that said, I do have a couple of other small requests, if you would entertain that this morning. Those being all for the same purpose, on December 13th, Wayne County Sheriff's Office is planning to give a community toy giveaway. We're doing this as part of our community engagement strategies and hoping to be able to put some smiles on the faces of some young children in our community. With that, we're receiving, or going to receive donations from different individuals and companies that want to help us with this promotion. However, I would ask counsel if I could spend a small portion of money out of our donations line item, which I believe is unrestricted, unrestricted monies. However, I would ask your permission to spend up to, an up to amount of $1,500 out of that to help with purchase of items that we would be able to, promotional items that we would be able to give to these children. This would supplement anything that we receive from the community businesses or individuals. The line item number for that is 4106.00360.0000.000. Lots of zeros.
Randy, I will add, because when I worked on the funds for the Auditor's Office a couple of years ago, I asked the commissioners to make sure these things were the donations that we receive for the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office and that, that they approved an ordinance or whatever it was at the time, and they did. So you could just spend it. And you do have $7,018.70 in there, so.
So the ordinance would cover those expenditures?
I think so. I think you can just spend it on whatever. I'm pretty sure. Do you remember that, Ron? It was probably in 2023?
I think we enabled it.
Yeah.
I think the, there were some caveats, but they related conditional gifts, and the conditions had to be approved. But this is unrestricted, these are unrestricted funds, is what I hear you saying.
It's my understanding that that line item is unrestricted.
Just a gift to your office, you know, your department, so you should be able to spend it. However, I'm pretty sure that's the way that.
Okay.
That is.
And to be clear, any money spent would be in, would be direct. They would be the recipients.
So are you saying we don't need to take action then for him to do that?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think, I think the way that ordinance was written for the sheriff and the few others, I think there's three or four of them on here, that you could just go ahead and, then we did it, so you could just go ahead and spend it, just leaving it set for 20 years. Go ahead and spend it.
I think there's a lot of. I think there probably might have been a provision that would be run by counsel. You know, I think that's the appropriate way to handle it. I think that's why the sheriff's here. But I think you're right. We've enabled the receipt of gifts.
But I will make the motion for the sheriff to go ahead and spend that amount if you want to do the official, and then he doesn't have to come back. And if we didn't need it, okay.
Second. They moved to second that we permission to the sheriff to spend up to the $1,500 from the donation fund towards the toy giveaway program. Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Good, thank you. On that same, or for that same project, I would then ask counsel if I could spend up to $200 from commissary for any beverages or snacks for the staff that are, that are here manning that at that time. I have checked with State Board of Councils and in fact talked to Paul Joyce yesterday, and he said there's absolutely no problem with doing that.
Okay, I would make that motion also then, spend the 200 out of the commissary fund.
Actually, I think it would have been included in the resolution for the commissary fund we were going to have today.
Oh, well, okay.
That's exactly right.
But that's not done yet.
But that's not done, so I think it's appropriate.
Second. They moved to second that we approve spending up to the $200 from the commissary fund for refreshments on the staff, for the staff on the giveaway day. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One other thing before Randy gets away, just as a matter of information for you, Fund 4105 is the canine donations to the sheriff. You have $11,418 sitting there also.
4106 was the one I referred to.
Right. But I'm telling you, 4105 is also a donations fund you have as canines.
Yes, yes. And that's, I believe earmarked specifically for canine operations and.
Just reminding you that is there, because sometimes people don't see all the additional funds.
Yes, yes, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the easy things to decide on this morning.
I try to do my best. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, before you, the next item on the agenda is an interlocal agreement between the county and the town of Milton. And this is for, to provide a grant to the town of Milton from the use restricted opiate funds in the amount of $9,239. And this money is to be used for body cameras and handguns for their police department. This takes an approval by both bodies, the commissioners and the council. And the commissioners have already approved this, and we would recommend you adopt it as well.
Questions on this?
How many officers do they have? Yeah.
Pardon me?
How many officers do they have?
They actually have three.
They do?
Yeah. They've got a new marshal that I think is doing some good things and updating their department. This, I think this is a good thing.
That's good. Steve, this was a part of the grant process, right? Did they actually write a grant or was this?
Correct. And then the grant was considered by a committee that Commissioner Roberts chairs.
Thank you.
We have, any other questions?
No, I'll move for approval to sign. Second.
We moved to second to approve the signing of the local agreement with Milton for the use of opioid funds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have topics you want us to sign?
Bobby has that.
While you're looking at those, there will be other uses that have been approved by the committee. They will be related, basically not for profit entities, and so rather than having an interlocal, they will use and be provided for those, and those will not have to come back. So that's not the only one that's.
So what is the, just for me, what's the difference in, like, why is this coming to us, but the others will not?
Yeah, because this is an interlocal agreement. There's a statute that definitely applies to it that says that if the physical bodies of the two entities, which be Milton and counsel, approve it, then it doesn't have to go to the Attorney General's office. That's advisable if you have involved the state.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do your old business first, or you go right into mine?
Go right into yours.
Okay. Yeah, before you, your bi-weekly report on the projects. Not much has changed since the last time you've seen this. Certainly the weather has played part in some of that. But work has started on the fairground parking lot. The highway department has been working on the drainage. The retention pond at the southwest corner of the fairgrounds has been expanded to accommodate the anticipated runoff that will be generated by the parking lot. We've also got piping ordered. And remember, the expenditures for this is going to be paid for out of the fairgrounds naming rights. And on your report on the far right-hand lower corner is the current balance of those naming rights monies.
So you have received the recent changes?
Work continues on the chamber lighting and speakers. Again, still working on the, on the fine tuning that, but the lighting has been finished, and we now have control of the different banks within this room. We can dim everything. It has an automatic off. It is sensor controlled, so the lighting system has been fixed. Nothing new on the courthouse front entrance, the courthouse elevator. We have had conversation with the engineering firm on this, and looks like we will probably go out for bids in this late spring, early summer.
Did you get the issues resolved with the judges about the noise factor?
Yeah. So counsel, or Commissioner Roberts has met with them and will be building the schedule around the judge's schedule as well. So they're willing to accommodate it to a point, but certainly will still be mindful of the court's schedules.
But they also want an elevator, so.
Correct. And then still waiting on bid documents for review on the security entrance on the west side of the courthouse. Then here's your, your council one-time balance on the far right-hand corner there. And that represents, I think, most of the expenditures that you approved. Recall that you approved a hundred and some thousand for equipping the new police cars, and I think most of those invoices have been submitted. And then what is not accounted for yet, remember you committed $17,500 for new jail washer that has been ordered, and the amount came in at $16,200, I think. So just a little less than what we had estimated. Any questions?
Yes, I have the claims for the equipment to go on the new sheriff's cars. So that has been taken out of that?
Yes. That number you see there is less those claims that you're on site.
They were a little over 105,000.
Which I think you had, I think they had anticipated a little more than that, so hanging under budget.
Any questions, Steve?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We sure are not here today because of the, their state associations having their annual conference this week and their, you know, apples and all that. Any other business to come forward?
Max, this is not exactly county business, but I would just like to take the opportunity to thank all of the people that worked during the SNAP issue that the country had, the people in Wayne County, the food pantries and the churches. Everybody worked really hard and did a great job with all of that. And then the First English Lutheran stepped in and served. But thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public that have anything to bring to the meeting? If not, our next meeting will be January the 7th. And we do have a workshop in two weeks, the evening of the 17th. If there is nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Adjourn.
They moved to second to adjourn the council session. All in favor, aye?
All in favor, aye?